What we're going to do, and my agenda's opening slowly here, but I can see that most everybody's here for one thing, which I think, again, my agenda's coming. It's going slow. But the requisition process, so, which is, I think it's C., right?
Correct.
So we're going to skip down to C. And I lost my agenda again. But basically, what this comes down to is, we have a requisition process. Couple of the board members, we talked about putting this on the agenda because I think the main thing is, we want to make sure we're efficient, and we want to make sure we have some overwatch of this. But at the same time, we don't think it does any department heads any benefit to have to come in here for small budgeted items. So I think we had, we had a few coming through that were like $300, $400. So we're like, you know, the townspeople voted on the budget, it falls within the budget. Secondly, you know, the thing I think is important to note is, for those of you who have buildings you work in, the buildings should be covered by, you know, the general government and, you know what, I'm going to do this while I talk, if nobody minds. So the general government and buildings account should fund that. So we want to make sure if somebody needs, you know, I don't know, ceiling tiles or something like that, that we have that going to the proper account, so we don't have a department head looking at their budget trying to find, you know, a few hundred dollars in order to repair something in their building. So that's sort of the general thing at issue here. I know that Kim and Diane got together and you had reviewed the policy and had a couple of suggested changes. Do you guys want to talk about that at all?
I'm sure.
All we did was add the requisition procedure into the purchase policy.
Okay.
So it's all in one place, and it's more streamlined, so that if people have a question, they can just go online, they look underneath the purchase policy, and now if the board chooses to agree with, we have the requisition procedure.
Kim, with this requisition policy, would they have to come back to us and ask us before they do it?
No, they would follow the purchase policy. If the purchase policy is basically powered by the amount of the service or the item that they're going to buy, again, it's listed on the income share, $1,500, you got the requisition, but it doesn't need to be approved by the department head from $1,500 to $2,500. There are different categories as to what amount the service or the item is going to cost. Some will need a requisition, they'll need pre-quotes, again, it's all spelled out there. The requisition will be turned in, and I can maybe want to make sure that it's all the proper documentation and the backup, you know, supporting people with it, and then that goes before the board, excuse me, before the board.
And I think, you know, we've had this policy like this. I don't think this is anything new. However, I think in years, you know, you read the policy once, and you haven't read it in a couple of years, and maybe you start doing things a little different. We just want to kind of re-set where the policy is. And, you know, I'm not going to read it word for word, but as Kim just said, you know, if we're at $0 to $1,500, we don't require the requisition. However, the department head or committee chair, vice chair, has to approve. Now, is everybody still okay with that one? I don't, I see that as probably an efficient way to do things. So any product or service that is over that $1,500, but not in excess of $2,500, does require a requisition submitted to the Board of Selectmen and authorized by the purchasing agent. So is the board still okay with those numbers for what comes to us?
I just, okay, one thing on that number three with the $1,500 to $2,500. Kim and I just realized that it requires a minimum of three written quotes.
Yep.
But so does the number, so does the second one from $2,500 to $3,500 require three quotes. So we were thinking if maybe you want to just change that to one written quote.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, the $1,500 to $2,500, one written quote is reasonable. Is that what the board, are you guys leaning that way?
I'd like to see how the department heads feel about that.
Yeah.
Especially the fire department.
I don't think anybody heard that.
Oh, I'm sorry, especially the fire department. Yeah, I'd like to hear the fire department speak on it, how he feels about it.
All right. So if you could use the microphone so people at home could hear you.
It is what it is. The board's going to decide, that's fine. One quote from $1,500 to $2,500, fine. My biggest concern was from the $0 to the $1,500 that you guys just approved. So if I need to pump out the wastewater for $300, I don't have to come here. That was the biggest thing.
Or service the unit that you were telling me.
Correct, yep. Or what you have on the agenda for today.
Well, you wouldn't need it.
That's what I mean.
Right, right. Yeah, it's funny, I saw that earlier in the week, and I'm like, oh, we'll take care of that pretty quick. But I think, you know, the three quotes rule was put in place by the selectmen, the Board of Selectmen many moons ago. And I still think that is good, but the board also has the right to basically say, if we have somebody we've done business with for a long time, it's a, you know, a reasonable quote, a competitive quote, then we don't have to get the three. But I, I think we should keep that for the over 35. The sealed, what I'm saying is, the sealed bid should remain the same. But if we're going $1,500 to, is it?
$2,500.
$2,500. $1,500 to $2,500, as long as we have one quote, I tend to be okay with that. What's everybody?
I don't know, I'm actually thinking four and five should be increased to $5,000 from $3,500 to whether or not it needs to be sealed.
Anything over $5,000, you get pre-quotes?
So four would be over $2,500, but not exceeding $5,000. Five would be, anything over $5,000 requires a sealed bid.
Yeah, the difference is the sealed, right?
Correct.
Between four and five.
Yep. I think, because these dollar amounts were chosen 10 years ago. Prices go up.
Mm-hmm.
I think we need to reflect that since we're doing a policy change modification anyways. Now would be a good time to modify that amount as well.
So is that a motion?
No.
Oh, sorry, chief?
Just have a quick question. If it's on state bid, and it's $4,000, you still going to require three quotes, even though it's on state bid?
No, that's in the policy, state.
I haven't seen the policy, that's why I'm asking. That's all.
Okay, I think the.
It's on the website.
Service.
Yep.
Then you go to specialty.
Okay.
Yeah, and just so you're aware, under exceptions to the bid process, section two, Board of Selectmen may approve a purchase without requiring adherence to the bidding process when the purchase is to be made from the state or federal bid list. Or there is only one known source for the item.
Okay.
Matt?
Yes.
I have one thing you had mentioned about, a lot of the stuff comes out of general government buildings.
Mm-hmm.
The board needs to emphasize to all the department heads, if they don't give us numbers at the end of the year, it can happen, because we're almost.
So thank you for the.
Out of money now.
Thank you for the reminder. So typically, Nancy will send you guys, the building guys, at the end of the year, right? What, do you send it in December?
Well, usually prior to the end of the year.
Basically, your to-do list, so we gotta, we've got to get the numbers. But obviously, stuff happens, and maybe you can't predict what it is. We have to build that into that.
Right.
That budget. But, but that's going to be huge if you guys can provide those numbers. If you have a, you know, a need, a project that's coming up, we got to get it in there, and that'll save us a lot of aggravation down the road, so. So when you see that email towards the end of the year from Nancy, make sure you give it some, sit down and really think about it, you know, the things you've been, you know, things you've been putting off or whatever. We won't know about it because we're not there every day.
And not a wish list. We have to, you know, because we don't want the budget to go sky high.
Yeah, we need, you know, no hot tubs or anything like that, but, but the, you know, a real to-do list. Jack?
Yeah, I'm a little confused. I know I've gone over and seen budgets that Pete's done, and he always puts a dollar amount in for building maintenance and so forth, and I assume that's the budget. This, this number you're talking about now, that where these dollars come from, what is that? That's the town's budget for building maintenance? What is this?
I don't know if you'd call it building maintenance so much.
What do you call it? Everybody's wish list? I'm not, that's what I'm trying to get a feel for.
It's general government and building, so it's the care of general government.
Because I know when Pete bought stuff, and we'd put new doors on and so forth, it came out of his budget. Doesn't every department have their own budget for this stuff? I'm kind of confused.
They used to, yeah.
Yep.
Say that, Nancy, I'm sorry. So everybody has their own budget?
Well, they did, and we tried to consolidate a lot into general government, but that's kind of like a guessing game, because we don't know what's going to hit us.
Okay, so they don't have to put it in their budget, they'll come up to someone and say, look, and I think I'm going to have X, Y, and Z for next year, so add it to the town's number.
Yeah.
And we draw on it as we need it.
Yeah.
But we're talking about for government building maintenance essentially.
Is it a transfer station, government buildings?
It's not just anything. What I mean is, you can't just say, oh, I'll just put this towards the town budget. It's specifically expenses that qualify under government buildings.
Okay. How does the transfer station know if they're qualified under government buildings?
Kim and I usually will look at the different bills that are, you know, being talked about or requesting, you know, because you try to be self-sufficient in your own budget, but if there are things like a furnace, let's say, you have a furnace, we will deal with that out of general government buildings.
A good example, the cardboard shack. Let's say the roof is going to need to be repaired within the next 18 months or so.
Right.
The transfer station manager would submit a request at the end of the year to have it included in the government building.
Add it to the, okay.
Okay, there's a good example of what should be submitted.
Yeah, well, Pete and I talked about that today when I found out about this thing that existed, and just so you know it, he had no idea this thing was available, that he even could.
But unfortunately.
He bet he even could put, an ask for request to put money aside in this government budget, whatever you refer to it as, you know.
The government building fund, yeah.
Okay, okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Yep. So, yeah, I guess the short answer is if, if you've been capturing it in your department budget before, you shouldn't be going for it, I guess is what, what the answer is.
And if you're putting it in general government, you got to take it out of your budget. You can't have both.
Well, that's it, is, is we want to keep the balance, so to speak.
Right.
So I had a, department head just text me a suggestion. I guess they're shy. We, he's talking about a, and let's just call this guy chief, could we do a lump sum for each building? We could give it back if it's not spent. I guess in a sense, we do that anyway. But I think what Nancy is trying to do is, she's trying to establish, rather than just guessing and doing a broad, she's, she's trying to base it off of legitimate things you guys would have in mind, and then we're going to approve it as a board, and it's going to go to the voters and stuff, so. And like anything else in the budget, it would go, it would go back to the general fund at the end of the year. If, does that kind of answer?
But even still, you're raising taxes on that amount that you're appropriating. Even though it's going back into the general fund, the taxes are still being affected by that.
Yeah, I think the key thing is, you want to be realistic about it, you know, so.
So can we get back to the purchase policy?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
That's a great idea.
So we, we had the beginnings of some motions going on.
Can Lisa make the motion?
Well, we hadn't approved it, but I made a recommendation of an amendment, so we could have a motion to approve it with that additional amendment.
All right, and just refresh us.
Which is for under the section four and five, under the policy, change the $3,500 to $5,000.
So any product, service over $2,500, but not to exceed $5,000?
Correct.
Does require a requisition, a minimum of three quotes, but they're not sealed, is essentially what you're proposing.
Correct.
Anybody want a second?
And then on five, it's any product or service over $5,000 require a sealed bid.
Second.
So you want to do that all as one motion?
Yes.
And are you going to also require only one written quote for number, for between $1,500 and $2,500?
I think so.
That's some, you need to put that in your motion.
Change, though. Is that?
That's a change. That would be an amendment.
That is a change?
Yeah. Because right now, it's three, so you're going to change it to one, so add that to your motion.
Do you want to do that, Lisa?
Yeah, who recommended that?
They did.
From three to one?
Kim and I.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, so I accept that friendly amendment to my motion for the number, minimum number of written quotes under number four to be changed from three to one.
Accept the friendly change.
So Larry's still a second. Any discussion, anybody? All right, so we'll go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
So that's unanimous with the four of us. So anything else in regards to the policy? Again, I think it's, we're trying to keep this as efficient as possible, but at the same time, still have overwatch, and, you know, we have to understand, the budget is proposed, it takes us, whatever that is, four or five months to go through these budgets. They go to a public hearing, then they go to the voters. So this stuff certainly has its, its visibility, and, you know, public has opportunity to vote on it, so then, then we go to a purchase policy after that, so. All right, do we want to leave this topic?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so with that.
Matt, does that eliminate G, A, and B?
Which page is that?
It says quote for repairs, library, overhead light, that can't be much. And I know what the reels are.
Oh, you're talking about on the agenda. I thought you were talking about the policy.
Oh, no, on the agenda, I'm sorry.
It, yeah, it probably does, but, so, so G are, one's a library quote, I think. Diane, would you agree we can take that off the agenda tonight, based on what we just did?
Nope, because Nancy says we're over budget under general government.
All right.
Yeah, I need the board, yeah.
Good reason? And same with the fire station?
That's correct. That's why we didn't go by the purchase policy.
We're not over budget, but we've got four months to go, and we're getting down there.
So that was a nice try, Charlie. I appreciate the effort, but I guess we're going to.
The fire chief needs them cords.
Well, yeah, I know, we're, we'll talk about them. I was, I was excited when you said we could take stuff off the agenda, so. All right, so with that, if any department heads don't want to stay for any reason, we're going to allow you to leave. And if anybody wants to give me a ride home with them, that'd be great, too. All right, thanks, everybody. We appreciate everybody coming out. Sorry we made you wait a little bit. Larry, you want to do the EOC update?
Okay, so.
Yes.
I just wanted to let you know Kathy is here for the heating season bid, just so you know.
Okay, you don't, you don't care if we wait, right? Larry's got to stay here anyway, so. Why don't we, why don't we do that? So letter E. Trying to open it. It's not opening for me.
So Kathy is here from propane, suburban propane, the current supplier we have.
Yep.
And she has some numbers, I hope. Okay, if you want to step to the mic for me, and you can let them know what you have for fuel and propane. And we're basing this on less oil and less propane this year, so 6,000 gallons of oil and 45 propane?
Yes. So, good evening, thank you for letting me come in. Suburban can offer a one-year fixed price or a two-year fixed price, just in case there's interest in that. We will continue with the current contract that we have for you, and the current service bid as well, which is discounted. But the one-year propane price, which is for 4,500 gallons, is $1.47 per gallon, and then the two-year would be $1.54. Those are fixed prices. And then for the oil, year one would be $2.05, and year two is $2.13. Oil has significantly dropped, propane is kind of increasing very rapidly. I think it's with the market and the less drivers out there, propane obviously is, is part of gasoline, and they haven't produced as much. So we're seeing a very volatile year in that, but we're excited to continue with you, if we can. We're national, but we're local to Brentwood, and we'd like to continue as we put tanks on the ground this year and did all the testing and everything, so.
Great, and we have this in writing?
I have it on, I, I'm sorry, I was working at home, and I couldn't get it off the computer, so it was emailed.
Was?
Yeah, so I do have it on an email form.
Oh, yeah, okay.
For you, sorry.
Right. Does anybody have any questions?
Would this be a fix, if we took a two-year contract, would this be a fixed price for the two years?
Yeah, this, year two, right. So we have a year one and year two price, so it's my understanding that, you know, first year we, that price would be $1.47, and then the second year, it'd be $1.54. Unfortunately, with suburban, since we have long-term contracts, we reach out for those prices, and since we don't ever know the market, we just, you know, they predict. So, but it would be a fixed price. And with the towns, because you are tax exempt, we do waive all the additional fees. There's some delivery fee and some, actually a surcharge that we, we can waive for the towns. So it's pretty much a flat, it's very flat, actually.
Okay, great.
Diane, you feeling good? We got?
We haven't put it out there yet, have we?
I'm sending it to you in email, the quote, no. And how long is this?
So I can, this is good through tomorrow evening, just because we were anticipating if the board would approve today, then we could lock in in the morning. We do buy, pre-buy the fuel through our fuel desks, and then if not, then I understand that you wanted to go to the bidding process anyway, so we would be subject to bidding, bidding for the fuel, so.
And how many years have we been with suburban?
This is their first year.
Okay.
And as far as I know, we've had no issues except one, when we had, the fire station wasn't on, what do you call it?
Auto.
Auto, thank you. And that was resolved.
And I'm just thinking that our purchasing policy would allow us to not have to go out to bid.
Okay.
We are seeing that with the towns because of COVID, the extending of the contracts. Obviously, there's, you know, it makes it difficult. It's nice to be with one supplier, we have great service, I'm on cell phone with the town, so I get, you know, reached out, and I do multiple towns, we do the town of Brentwood as well, so.
One other thing, too, is if you switch or go out to bid, and you do switch, it's, can be a painful experience to go and change the propane tanks.
Yeah.
So, and we have a lot of propane still in these tanks, because they're only used for the generator.
Right, we planned, the contract read September 1st, so I read it that way to the May 31st. So we'd use that timeframe, because that's really your winter fuel usage, and so we hope to push all those gallons through.
So anybody want to make any motions? I will say it, you know, since this would be a contract and negotiated, we could talk later and on public if the board was more comfortable doing that.
Can I ask another question? What if we don't use all the oil, all our own propane?
So typically, um.
We pay for it anyway?
There is a, there is something that says if, if it's not ran through, that typically we can force the purchase. I'll tell you, I've been with the company two years, and I've never forced a contract, so. The majority of my customers stay with suburban, because we really do offer great service, and they, you know, we're, we're here to negotiate and provide quality service and pricing. It, it doesn't really happen very often, and we really, most of the, like, we do have some fuel left over on our contracts, but that's really for us to work through with most customers, so we don't really have a, we haven't had that happen.
So that's something that we couldn't say for the next year?
Well, we do push the gallons through, so, so we don't, we try to make sure that all gallons are used. In fact, we typically, when I talk to clients, we'll short them, rather than say, okay, you should buy 20,000 gallons, you know. As a sales rep, we want to be very accurate in what our usage is, and I think that's one of the reasons why we drop the usage, because we have, we know what we're using, we have propane already in those tanks, so instead of saying, okay, you need another 10,000, we back it off, so we're making sure that we are getting down to those numbers that make sense.
Okay, my next question's going to be, what if we have a really bad winter, and we use an, over the amount, do we still stay at the same price, or do, and let's just say the price changes, because it could change.
Right.
And it changes drastically, do we turn around and do we pay the new price because we used up our allotment?
There's a, there's a couple of scenarios. We always look at the contracts, and that does happen, where we run through the fuel before we get done with the contract. In that point, we do start renegotiating. We'll look at the pricing. If the pricing looks two or three cents, you know, some pennies between that, we'll keep it at the same pricing. I mean, our point is to keep it at as close to that pricing as possible. In the event we had some disaster, and the price went up, for instance, I'll, I'll let you know that October 1st, we go into our winter differential, it's a different product, that price can go anywhere from, it usually goes anywhere from 15 to 30 cents. That's all factored in this current pricing already, so you wouldn't see that, because it's fixed.
Well, I was just thinking, if one of the refineries goes down, the price goes up.
It does, but let me just say that, you know, because of these fixed contracts, we understand what's involved in those, especially with our clients that are towns. We have a lot of businesses on fixed as well, so we will look at that, but it's, the majority of the customers are in the same pricing structure, and we've been able to hold prices. That's what margins are for, you know, they're not to be completely excessive, you know, every company makes money, but we do that so we can, we can look at the actual pricing itself and make sure that we're within a guideline. And suburban, because we are a national company, we're number three, they have long-term contracts, so in the case of a. so in the case of a disaster, last year they had a Canadian pipeline loss, we have fuel and it goes to our customers first. So we don't sell fuel outside the company that way in the case of that. So our customers always have fuel, so as a big provider, it's important that you'll get serviced when you need the fuel in case of something like that. We're constantly watching that, and I know that I work very closely when, I don't think she's ever found me not available, but it's important that if something's coming down the pipeline like that, that we have those discussions, and we'll do everything possible to keep the pricing in line.
So you, on this particular offer, you need to know by tomorrow night, is that what I heard?
I do, just because I know that you guys were going to vote on it, and we will go in the morning, and this, I mean, I had to do a little bit of jumping because my boss wasn't, our bosses wasn't in today, but we'll lock in the gallons in the morning in that case, and I know if you don't want to go that, you know, we release those gallons, so it's just the way Suburban does their overall pre-buy purchasing on these things.
So does the board want to wait and talk about it? Very good with that?
Yep.
So we'll let you know one way or the other tomorrow, so.
Would you like some business cards?
I've got your email, no problem.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so skipping all over the place here, but we want to get people in and out as necessary. The rest of us have to stay. So we have, we're going to skip down to just D. So this is a complaint regard to a town ordinance and a selectman provided misinformation. I'm reading right off the agenda, so I believe this is Barbara White bringing this forward. So Barbara, if you'll go to the mic.
Hi.
Hello.
I apologize for having to be here in the first place, but this is something that has bothered me ever since the last planning board meeting, and I just need to say something to the board, and I was told I needed to do a complaint in front of the board in public, so here I am, okay? And it's actually not selectman provided misinformation, it's something that a selectman said that I feel was totally outside of how they should have been acting, okay? So I will let you know. Okay, during the August 25th public hearing for Mr. Keller's hotdog stand, during board discussion, ex officio Larry Foot stated directly to Mr. Keller, "Mr. Keller, if it doesn't pass, maybe you should just have a cookout and ask for donations, and you're not a business." I feel this is totally inappropriate statement for Mr. Foot to make as a selectman and the ex officio member of the planning board. This was a public hearing with many members of the public on the Zoom call. To suggest something as a way to skirt the procedures of the ordinances is not in the best interest of the town, and certainly not something a selectman representing the town should have said either in public or in private. My personal opinion is Mr. Foot maybe shouldn't be the ex officio anymore. If you doubt what I'm saying, you can listen to the recording. This is exactly what he said, and I think that this is just something that a selectman should never say, because it's against what we're here for. It's against what the planning board and the selectmen are here for, to try to do in the best interest of the town and adhere to the ordinances, and that's what I needed to say.
So you're here representing the whole planning board, correct?
No, I am not. I am here representing myself as a member of the planning board for 12 years or more and a resident of the town who didn't appreciate what you said and suggested.
What ordinance did I break? What town ordinance did I break by saying that?
I didn't say you, and...
You said I was going against the town ordinance.
I did not. That is what was on, that's on the, that's on the agenda.
Because the planning board has been dragging this for the last three months.
That has nothing...
Yes, it does. It's very frustrating.
I'll let you have your say, and then I'm going to say again.
It's very frustrating that for the last three months, each month, they gave this guy something to do with the Kelleher, and then last month, they should have gave him the stipulation, you need to go to state and get your driveway, whatever, straightened out, signed review, done. Then you guys are talking with the planning board, if you park the car on a gravel, what about the mud? Not concerned with the planning board at all. Then you discuss with them, well, you cannot pull out or back out of Highland or Runaway for the state roads, which wouldn't be a concern if you're on the, I mean, by the planning board. When I mentioned that the general store does that, the planning board mentioned that was grandfathered, and that's not true. They're not allowed to back out or to Runaway either, but that's okay. The planning board is not consistent in what they do. There are all different ways, not with just Mr. Kelleher, with the, with the fire department, with the building department, they're just not consistent at all. We have issues with Mr. Kelleher, we have issues with 185 South Main, and the issue with the planning board is they don't like being called out when they're doing something wrong, and they're doing a lot wrong. There's members that sign on and then get booted out, and they can't get back in, and under the executive orders, if someone is not allowed to get back into a meeting, that meeting should be canceled at that point, and next time it's going to get canceled, that if I get another text that I can't get into the meeting, we're going to stop the meeting right there, because it's the governor's orders right here, and it's happened twice already, and that individual is here.
Did I say something? I'm not in charge of the planning board meetings.
Are you all set, Larry?
I'm all set, but I think there's a couple guys that want to say something.
So we'll just let Barbara have a rebuttal here, and then we'll let others be heard.
So, I'm not talking about anything about this meeting other than your particular statement, which is that you suggested that he could skirt the ordinance and not go through the procedure to be a business. That's my complaint.
What's the difference between skirting the ordinance and going against the ordinance? You just said I didn't do that. What's the difference? You're saying I'm going against the ordinance.
The difference is that you're trying to tell somebody to do something that's against the way that the ordinances say the procedures are.
You just said five minutes ago I didn't say that.
Larry, she said you did not go against the town ordinance. What she said was that you had suggested in a public meeting to a resident how to skirt or go against the town ordinance.
Correct, thank you. And the title that's on here, I didn't put that title down. It was put on the agenda that way. It should have been just a complaint, and it's really not misinformation. It's a misstatement that you should never have made in public, which is...
Oh, no, I meant to make it.
Huh?
I meant to make it. I'm not going to, I'm not going to deny it.
No, you can't deny it because it's on tape, and everybody knows you said it. I'm just saying my personal opinion as a resident of this town and a member of the planning board is the fact that that is something that you should not have said as a representative for this town. That's all I want to do. I just want to make my point. Thank you.
Thank you. So Larry, anything else on this before we open it up if others?
No, you can open it up.
So anybody else want to be heard on this subject? Chief?
I wish you would have done my cord reels first, but that's besides the point.
I tried.
The, I have, I've been in front of you guys, I have my own issues with the planning board, but this is not a planning board issue. The only thing I suggest to the selectmen, if you choose to change who your liaison is to the planning board, it could be detrimental to the fire department. Since Mr. Foot has worn two hats, representative there and representative for the fire department, a lot of votes and approvals that the planning board has taken, he is interjected and made sure the fire department code compliance was involved. Without it, we'd be a lot worse. So like I said, this has nothing. My concern is that the board could vote to remove him as their liaison, and then, you know my opinion on the planning board. So, like I said, when you have a planning board meeting to discuss the planning board, please inform me, because you should have an email from last week from me with the planning board that I still haven't heard from. So like I said, that's another issue for another day, but please don't remove him.
Okay. Any, anybody else on this subject? Mr. Zelinski?
The planning board involves Zelinski, I'm an alternate, and let's see, we've got this emergency order 12 RSA 91-8. When this first started, these, you know, calling from home and stuff, it was either the first or second meeting, I got kicked off, and I just happened to mention to a couple of people, but the last meeting we had, I got kicked off, and I keep calling back, and it says you've been put on, there's a, I should have wrote it down, a formal statement, you have been eliminated from joining this meeting. And I call back again, I got the same thing. I had to send Mr. Foot a text, hey, I can't get back into the meeting. Somehow he made it happen. But over here, it says, in this provision, provides a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. It was just that I knew him, I was able, but what's the formal thing? If I can't participate in the meeting or I'm shut off, who do I call? 1-800?
So I know when we have our meetings, I can't speak for the planning board, but we specifically say in the announcement to email the planning board secretary.
I don't think...
Board of Selectmen Secretary.
I'm sorry, sorry. I pointed at the Board of Selectmen Secretary. So typically Diane would get an email and say Ziggy can't get in, and we would take appropriate...
Even for the, even for the planning board?
I don't know what they do.
No, no, no.
Don't know what they do. They, I would assume, you know what they say about assuming, but I would assume at the beginning of the planning board meeting, they're reading a similar thing that I read, and that has instructions as to how to contact the administrator, so the person running the Zoom, like Diane does for us, hopefully she doesn't have to do that anymore, but when she did, so I would assume the planning board has a similar thing where you email the planning board secretary, who I think is the one who runs the Zoom, and says, hey, I can't get in.
And that, you know, that's my, I get knocked out. You would think that the, if you're on the planning board, that they'd have your name and number, you know, because your phone, use your phone, that this is an important person, where they, and they didn't say they're off the phone for now, you know, because they're going to bed, that, you know, hey, what happened to this person? All right, can we have attendance at the end of the meeting?
Attendance at the end of the planning board meeting?
Yeah. These people dropping off, this last meeting was three hours and 57 minutes.
So we're not the...
I don't know who's on there, you know, but, you know, if you join the board, you should be participating.
So the planning board is a duly elected, their own board, you know? So that's up to a vote of that board.
Okay.
I think it's a really good idea, though.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on this issue? No? Good. So any, anybody from the board?
I'll just mention that it happened to me, too.
Dropping off?
I got muted.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Barbara. So was it a, you dropped off, you couldn't get back on, was that...
No, I didn't drop off, I just got muted and couldn't...
Oh, you got muted. So I will say with a lot of these Zoom meetings all over the place, like, and I think, and Charlie can probably answer this for us, I think the school board has their own limitation as to who can speak and whatnot, so this is new territory, I don't know who's doing what, but I, I'll just leave it at this, I commonly do this sometime, I'm taking off my selectmen's hat, and I'm saying that as a, as a resident, this pains me to hear this stuff. I, the planning board is the most, I'll go out on a limb, probably the most important board in our town, and when the board's not working together, that's not good for our town. So if people aren't working together on the planning board, I don't know what the answer is, but as a resident, I'd love to see them work things out, so. Anybody else? No?
I would also recommend that the planning board take a look at their agenda, and if there isn't something actually printed on the agenda that tells the public how to or who to notify that they are unable to connect, that they add that to each Zoom meeting agenda. Because it is required by law to allow them that ability, and we do have to by law discontinue a meeting if a member of the public cannot attend.
Yeah, I mean, it's one of those things, when we first did it, I, we, we learned as we went along, and I think the best practice at that point was the school board, so they gave us this script that we read, and I think Diane passed that around to the other secretaries, so it's, you need something outside of the software, outside of the phone to be able to get in touch with people.
Diane, so on Zoom, you have full capabilities of booting somebody, you're muting somebody, without nobody else knowing, because you had to host, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Well, you, you...
It's hard to prove, but the evidence is there, you know? We can't prove it, so if we're on a meeting now and you booted me off, we can't prove that. There's no, that's not recorded.
Yeah, but if you're on a cellphone, your cellphone carrier could have just as easily had a momentary loss in signal, and you would have been booted. You can't say it was whoever was managing the meeting. Again, it's Zoom software, there could be issues with that as well. You still cannot say it is the person who is managing. The only thing you can say is if you cannot get back in, then they, you have to have a way to notify the board that you are unable to, so that the board can stop the meeting and reschedule it.
And the only thing I'll add is if you listen to talk radio, they always tell the people to call from a landline whenever possible.
Yes, because cell phones are notoriously not reliable, especially when you want them to be.
Yeah.
Okay, so, your question is, are you guys going to remove me? Just don't make my day happy.
Anybody want to make a motion?
For what?
To do anything. To adjourn the meeting would be great.
That would be nice, but we're not done yet.
Okay. So I think we're moving off of this one. So appreciate everybody's feedback on this one. So I think, can we go to, can we skip down again so the chief can go to bed?
Yeah.
So quote for repairs.
Evening. The cord reels, it's the power cord reels that actually was sent to my liaison last year when he asked for a list of needs for the fire department. So instead of asking for five, we're asking for two.
Did you say that was on your list last year?
Yes, ma'am.
I never got that.
My liaison came to the fire station, we explained to him the cord reels, the key pads, the weather stripping, and a bunch of other things.
Never came to me.
Oh, trust me, I have learned in the six years here, there is a disconnect at Two Town Hall Road.
Not just Two Town Hall Road.
I'm just saying.
I'm just trying to find this one, my, my link is not working. What's it, what's the file called?
Fire Station EST 3139 from Kingston Electric.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, this is 180730, so...
Are these reels broken?
Yes, they are. This one particular one came out of my budget three times since we moved in in less than two years. We've replaced them numerous times. It just, the type that was installed per the contract or whatever it was, residential, they're not commercial, they're not lasting, and I think I came here once before, way back when, about a cord reel. We ended up just taking it out of my budget, as it was explained to me by my liaison, just increase my building account budget to pay for everything, and I refused to do that.
What is a cord reel? Can you explain to me?
The power cords that hang from the ceiling that the trucks all plug into.
Oh, okay.
So Nancy, you were alluding to earlier that we're not, we haven't overspent this budget by any means, but we're in danger?
We're getting lower, and if something big comes about, like furnace at the library, knock wood, I mean, you know, you don't know, and you don't want to get down to that point where you've got no funds there.
Because I think what I'd like to do if the board's into it in this, well, this won't affect what I think we're about to do for the chief, but I think we should get word out, especially right after this meeting, to the department heads about the buildings and say, okay... "Okay, we talked about it the other night, but now tell us what's on your mind right now, if you have anything, even if it was last year and you thought it was communicated, could you let us know now?" Because not only do we care about 2021, but now we're looking at 2020 and kind of mapping out what we're going to do with the rest of this year. So kind of like an ASAP for 2020. And then your normal, you know, November, December email for 2021.
The only, the other one, Mr. Chair, and I don't know if the board remembers, I was standing up here, and we had this discussion in regards to the keypads, that it is shorted out twice. And that's because the wires are still hanging out. The keypads were never installed. We're coming into winter. It's going to be a lot more expensive if we have to redo the keypad. I call it the brain, but the keypad, keypad module, because it burns out again, because we're still waiting to put those keypads up.
Okay.
So I'm letting you know, there's a priority.
There's one for you, yeah. So is everybody on the board okay with that? If we have Nancy send that out to the department heads? And meanwhile, we'll talk about this tonight.
Yeah. Chief, is there a reason why you're only going for the two and not the five?
Because of the cost. I paid for one late last year out of my own budget. That's what triggered the liaison to come in for the needs and the wish. And I got rid of the wish, which was signs and stuff. And we did the needs. The needs were the keypads, electrical outlets, and cord reels. Because if the cord reels are hanging from the ceiling, if they break, like two of them are going, then we put extension cords across the floor. And then it becomes a trip hazard, and I'm sure Primex is not going to want trip hazards.
Well, how many more do you need?
There's a total of six. So if you approve this, that's two. Plus the one that's done is three. I tried doing baby steps, when they break, replace them.
What I can't see is, on each purchase, we're wasting $600 on a stupid scissors.
That's where I was going with this. It's a lift rental of $585.
If you're talking three times, this one plus two more, that's $1,800 that would have bought the three that you need now. So let's just get it done with.
Well, the individual's not here, and I don't want to speak for the individual. But maybe if the Board of Selectmen nicely asked a certain person, there might happen to be a lift sitting there, so you wouldn't need the rental.
Wouldn't need electrician either. It's a plug-and-play type deal here.
I installed the last one.
That's what we need. It's just the price of the reel, we can install them.
So do we want to revisit this one? Have some, the chief work offline with some key individuals?
We should leave him with the impression that, hey, if he can get the lift, then we don't have to get us, depending on how often he can get the lift. The lift is $600. We rent that three times, that's the whole purchase price of all five of them?
Yeah.
Well, each lift rental is the cost of one reel. Yes.
He's getting two now, right?
Correct.
Yes, but one reel is $548.65.
$600.
And then 600, that's why I said it's basically the same. And then, of course, you have the cost of the labor.
So if he got the scissors jack from the road agent and just bought the reels out, it's almost 60% of the cost, 70%.
So do you want to pursue that, chief, offline?
I have no problem with that, but can I have an approval to purchase the reels? Or I want to do extension cords?
Yeah, so the.
And I'm just letting you know, I'm doing extension cords, so if somebody falls.
Yeah, yeah.
We had, the other thing, just so you know, Mr. Chair, with the construction going on, we had to move the trucks around.
Sure, yeah.
They're all facing out the front.
Yep.
So we don't have too much give and take, especially with the wall outlets.
Yep.
We had a 50-foot extension cord out the other day.
So can we, can the board approve the reels?
Well, I have one more question first.
Go ahead.
Does this require a licensed electrician to install?
Plug and play.
There.
I've installed this, if I do these two, that would make seven that I've installed. Like I said, one of them I've installed four times.
Maybe that's why they keep burning out, chief.
No, they, honestly, they keep burning out because the $69 ones from home, from a local vendor. The last one that we purchased last year was 500 and something dollars, and that one has lasted.
All right, so you're just looking for the 1,097.30, I take it? Which is the cost of two reels.
As long as.
If he can get the lift.
I would respectfully ask that you vote for the whole thing in case we cannot get the lift. Not to exceed that amount.
What do you think, Lisa, you want to make that motion?
All right, I will move to authorize the purchase of two reels on estimate 3139, not to exceed $1,807.30, with the understanding that we will be looking to borrow.
The chairman will be home by nine o'clock tomorrow morning. Because the individual's in bed right now.
Yeah, he just texted me.
Oh, did he?
He's not coming tonight, he's. Second by Charlie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so keeping in that same vein, the library, it looks like they have a quote for electrical work for a lighting fixture, for a total of $456.74.
The overhead light, she's using a desk lamp right now, so it really does need to be replaced.
And didn't you say at the other light, they can't get the bulbs far anymore?
Right.
Yeah, so.
And again, it was put on because Nancy said that we were going towards the budget. So that's why it's here.
Yeah.
So anybody want to make the last one of these that we have?
So yes, I will move to authorize payment of proposal number 3138 from Kingston Electric in the amount of $456.74.
Second.
All right, we'll give that to Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so moving on down the road here, I think we have us going back to EOC update.
All right, so the COVID update. The COVID-19 numbers, 22 new positives, 7,275 persons confirmed with COVID-19 in New Hampshire, with 6,615 recovered. 432 deaths attributed to COVID-19 in New Hampshire. We expect the new guidelines from FEMA headquarters today in regards to the emergency order number 65, which states, "In order authorizing assessments of civil penalties against businesses, organizations, entities, property owners, facility owners, organizers, and individuals who violate emergency orders. During one of our calls, this emergency order was heavily discussed, and police, fire, and health departments wanted to know the order should be enforced and follow it." So we did have a situation, and I'm going to say just a local restaurant, and I'm not going to name it, where they were in violation of the mask ordinance a second time. I called the health officer, he recommends send the police department down there. So we printed out the executive order, we gave it to the sergeant, he delivered it, and basically warned this restaurant, "The next time it's $2,000 fine, there's no more, no more chances. It's $2,000 a day if you don't comply."
Is that a state fine? Is that a state fine?
That's the fine the governor came up with, so.
So technically, yes.
It's not our fault.
Okay.
But not, not voted on by.
No, it's not voted on by us.
Our friends, yeah.
So the Attorney General's Office responds, "Municipality should work to educate the residents. If there is violation, provide them with the copy of the guidance," which we did, "and penalties they could be held responsible for," which we did, we highlighted. Legal then said, "The municipality's health officer, law enforcement should issue a written warning," which we didn't, I told them, just give them one more warning, "with the potential of being charged with a misdemeanor and up to $20,000 in fines." The Attorney General's Enforcement Hotline number is 271-2225. And the law enforcement number for contact in the Attorney General's Office is the 931-9975. So in local news, it is focused on a number of campuses reopening, local back-to-school plans, restaurants going to 100% capacity. The State Health and Human Services report concerns regarding the tent that had collapsed and remind us to have professional people do the install. In military support, they continue to support PPE distribution and elections. PPEs have been delivered throughout the state. We did pick up our voting materials last week. We picked up some more sanitizer and all that last week. And today, we picked up another 3,000 of the surgical masks. And, oh, and she wants to remind all the department heads for the next gopher round, we need all invoices pertaining to any COVID expenses into the EOC this week for the next round.
That's it?
That's it for COVID.
All right, thank you. And so I'm going to move on down to, it looks like be use of town hall for the Conservation Commission. I think basically where I'm at, if everybody agrees, is if these boards want to use the town hall again, I think as long as they're doing the social distancing and stuff, I don't have a problem if they.
I don't have a problem, I mean, I mean, that's a small group that meets.
Yeah.
I know she brought up an issue, and Lisa can probably weigh in on it, is that when they do meet back there, this door is locked, I guess? So they only have one way out. And if something happens on that ramp, a fire or something, they're trapped.
Yeah.
They feel more comfortable meeting here, out here.
Yeah, so it's not just for COVID-19 or whatever in this 6-foot distancing. It's to continue on, because it's true. As long as that office is not occupied, the door is locked, which means there's no second exit.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess my thing is, I don't have a problem with that at all if they're out here. I guess really what the question is here is, do we need to approve, do we currently need to approve every board that wants to come back and meet in person in the town hall? Or are we saying it's kind of back to your own?
Didn't we say at the last meeting that, you know, any board can?
Open out.
Yeah.
And we could just do the guidelines now, so if you have your, if you feel you're meeting your max, the rest wait outside. I don't see any board meeting their max anyway.
Yeah, unless there's something specific on a CBA, planning.
Well, they keep saying that we're getting 35, 40 people.
You know why they're getting 35? Because they're on their phones at home. They're alive here, they're not getting 35, 40 people, guaranteed.
So do you have somebody to monitor or stop them from coming in?
Well, we can monitor, and if it's getting to capacity, they'll wait outside, they'll say they're peace, and we'll swap off.
Okay.
But yeah, I think what we're saying is the boards need to take responsibility for that. If we hear it's being abused, because we'll certainly hear it, we always do, then we can take steps. But it comes back to, I think what I said in our last meeting is, I don't think we're going to pay for a commercial cleaning company after every one of these meetings. I don't think we're at that point.
These tables just need wiping down, and that's it.
I already talked to Tony about that. He said if he knows there's a meeting, he will be in to clean the next day.
And I think that's where we are right now.
And I think once, if I get some supplies and some whatever, I mean, I don't mind cleaning my table up before I leave. It takes five minutes.
But we also, if Tony can get those set up.
That's what I was going to ask, where are the sanitizers? I thought we had.
Right there, but I don't know if they're full or not.
Oh, okay.
I have a ton of sanitizer to put in there, so have them come back and see me.
Now that we're re, now that we're back here, we kind of have to have one there and one there.
Yeah, okay.
But, okay, so anybody want to make a motion or anything?
I'll make a motion that we open up the town hall to the boards that need it.
And there's still to at least schedule? Because don't we?
Yeah.
Schedule through. We have to schedule the halls for people, right? Through the Board of Secretary, correct.
Yeah, just, no one should just show up.
Exactly.
It's, basically, it's back to normal, you know?
Yeah.
With social distancing guidelines adhered to.
So are you opening it just to the boards?
So.
Who else uses it?
That's a good, like, if, if the scouts, if a political party calls up Diane, you know?
Well, he only said boards. Do you have committees and commissions? Are you opening it to boards, committees, and commission?
Boards, committees, and commissions.
Thank you.
It would be all.
But I think, are we not, are we not, are we not prepared yet to reopen it to those, like, sort of non-town?
I think you should start a soft or a.
Do this for a couple of weeks.
Let's see how it goes.
Yeah, because we have more, we have kind of more, you know, control over boards, commissions, and committees, I think.
Right.
If the, no offense, Boy Scouts, but if the Boy Scouts were to come in and have 100 people in here, we might not know about that.
Well, I think if you're not opening the downstairs to the public, we shouldn't be opening the upstairs to the public either.
Yeah, yeah.
Keep it amongst our boards and see how it goes. And then, you know, let's not open all at once and have all kinds of pandemics going through.
So Diane, you have that motion?
Yeah, Selectmen, Melvin, move to open the town hall and via scheduling through myself to boards, commissions, and committees.
Yep.
Good with that?
And who seconded it?
I seconded it.
Larry?
Thank you.
Wait a minute, didn't you make the motion?
I made it.
No, Charlie did.
Charlie made it, okay. Okay, so call for a vote. All in favor? Aye. So that was easy, unanimous. Okay, so, let's see.
I think you're on F.
F? Signage at the railroad crossing, is this Charlie?
Yep.
Okay, I sent every, I had Diane send everybody an email that I received from the DOT. We do not have a railroad sign over at, in the junction from the Plastow side coming to the Newton, but it's in Newton. And we've got brush and everything else that over there, so you couldn't even see the sign if it was there. And from what I found out, I've gone to the railroad, I've gone to the road agent, and I've gone to the DOT. And basically, it's the town's authority to do the signage and cut the bushes in the area so that you can see.
Is that town property, the bushes right there?
Well, it's within the 12 feet.
So our town guys can do it?
Yeah, our town guys could do it.
So within the 15 feet from center? Even on the state road?
I wasn't sure with the railroad.
No, it's a town road.
Oh, you're talking down Crane Crossing Road? Yeah, okay.
Also, there's supposed to be a sign there for the trailer park. And there's no sign for the trailer park as well.
Well, was that, that's supposed to be like a green road sign?
I think so, yeah.
Oh, really?
A sign for the trailer park?
Just letting you know that there's a trailer park there, according to the DOT.
So it's not a commercial sign.
Did you read the email that Diane sent? It was a while ago, but.
I don't recall seeing anything about you requiring a sign to advise you that there's a mobile home park up ahead.
I think what it was, there was supposed to be a railroad crossing sign on that street where the mobile home park is, that they come out onto Crane's Crossing. I think that's where the railroad crossing sign has to be as well.
Correct.
To warn those people coming out of the mobile park that there's a railroad crossing. To warn those people coming out of the mobile park that there's a railroad crossing.
So you have two signs?
You need three.
One on Crane Crossing, and one going to the mobile park?
You actually need three. You need one on both sides of the, one on each side of the rail, and one at the trailer park.
We already have one on one side.
We have one.
Right.
We already have one.
Don't have the other.
You have one, but you need a total of three. So yes, you do need just two.
All right, so what, do you need permission to buy them, or?
Yeah, we need permission to buy them, have the road agent put them in.
I think we need to get pricing on them, you know, how expensive are they? Where are we getting them?
Oh, so we don't have a price?
No, we don't have a price.
No.
No, but I think, I think it sounds like we're all head nodding on getting a price. It's something we should consider further. But I think as far as cutting of the brush, we can just do that, right?
Yeah, I think we can just ask the highway department, the road agent, to see if he can fit it into his schedule to have it done.
Everybody's cool with that?
So the signage in the trailer park, is that the trailer park owner's responsibility or is that ours?
Ours.
I did not know in the trailer park. Alls I know is on the other side of the trailer park.
Yeah, I don't think it has to be in the trailer park, because then you're not basically saying where it is. I would think on opposite road from the exit of the trailer park, letting them with an arrow pointing right, for example, to say railroad tracks if you take a right.
But it's almost like a street sign. It's not a commercial sign.
Yeah.
You know, like, you know, that's our responsibility if they want to have a commercialized sign that said, aye, this is our trailer.
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking, we can't put signage on somebody else's property.
Exactly, which is why I said it would have to be across the way from the exit of the, because it's just like a road. I know it's the mobile home park, but it's just a road.
Right.
So you want to have a sign opposite the exit of that road so that they know when they take a right, there's a railroad crossing right there.
Right.
So are you looking for prices, or do you know where to get them?
Through the road agent.
Yeah, so he'd have to get some quotes.
Road agent gets all the signs.
So we need to just send him an email saying...
So we need to have the road agent price the sign, which I don't think it's going to be over a couple hundred bucks.
So the road agent is aware of all this, and he probably will get to it when he gets to it.
Yeah, and, I mean, he doesn't really need the board's approval for this, because it's...
It's life-saving.
Road signage, it essentially falls under his authority, right? To do so.
Yeah, but this is something that's not in his budget. It's kind of probably...
So this is one of those times I think we need to see a requisition.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
It probably will be a quick discussion, but we just need to see it.
Yep.
All right, sound good?
We can request the road agent to get it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Get a price.
Yep. And then hopefully Diane, you can keep us posted on this so we can...
So you want me to contact the road agent and ask them again?
Yeah, we need quotes on everything, the signage, as well as cutting the...
Okay.
You know, because I forget who just said it, Nancy, it's surprise to his budget, I guess you'd say, unbudgeted.
Right.
And so this will be a coming attraction at a future meeting to discuss.
Can I ask why this was initiated? Did the state talk to us about it, or?
No, it came from a resident.
Yeah, stuff happens.
I was just curious.
Yep.
It actually came from somebody from Massachusetts.
And now that we know about it, if something gets killed over there...
We don't want anybody killed.
No, no, I totally agree. I just hadn't heard anything about it, that's all. I just wondered why.
Somebody from Massachusetts, are they allowed in New Hampshire?
Somebody from out of town was surprised to find a railroad track, so they said something.
I thought they had to quarantine for two weeks when they... I went to my mother's two weeks ago. I only had, came out now, so. All right, so that was that. We did G, the quotes for repairs. So Selectmen scheduled for state primaries. So next Tuesday, 8 to 8. For our millions of viewers out there, if you didn't know already, we're voting at 8 Merrimack Road, so don't come here. So if you come here, you'll be surprised.
So on both days, the one in September, November, I can only do 7 to 4.
Okay, that might be good, because I turn into a pumpkin at 5:00. I can get here, I can get here a little before 8:00. I'm turning into a pumpkin at 5:00. Kate has told me via text she can do it, but she'd prefer the afternoon, so 12:00 PM on.
Okay.
We only need three at a time.
I can be there the full time.
And Charlie counts for being outside, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So the thing about it is, though, is a certain town clerk jokingly threatened me to say that we will be used this time. It won't be, it won't be a, we won't be, it won't be a spectator sport for us this year. She's probably going to need our help, so...
Yeah.
As I jokingly said, I'll wear sensible shoes, you know what I mean?
Sneaker day.
We might be, you know, waving people around, but, but my wife just said, why is your mask off?
Because you're more than six feet away from people.
Okay.
And you're talking that way, no better.
I'll let you tell her, but it's good that people are watching, right? So...
So you don't have somebody, you need three select people?
So I guess Charlie is probably a 12-hour guy.
Yep.
Okay, so...
Even though he's on the ballot?
I can't work, I can't work the polls.
He can't work, but he counts.
Me, Matt, and Lisa in the day.
I'm 12 hours, so.
Yeah.
Me, Matt, and Lisa in the daytime, and then Lisa, Kate, and Charlie at night.
And the only other warning I got from the town clerk was, this is one of those, Lisa, as you know, the statistical...
Yes.
Things at the end of the night.
So at the end of the night, it's going to take longer and...
It's going to take a long time.
I'm always there till the end.
Okay.
I help them package up the ballots and everything just to make sure everything's good.
Good.
So...
Okay, so...
And the porta-potties have been ordered, just so you know.
Selectmen have to sign off.
Oh, do they order?
Yeah, we do sign off on the red tape.
Yeah.
Yeah, I ordered them.
I don't know that. You can though, Charlie.
Yep.
Once the election's over, I can.
Yeah, right.
And they'll do it for the presidential, too.
I think we're going to let the workers, they can go in the firehouse.
So the only other thing is if either Diane or Nancy, you can reach out to the powers that be planning this and make sure they have everything they need, if there's anything else they need from us.
They're having a meeting Friday.
Yeah.
Setting up Friday, right?
Are you talking Bob Dismalik and the chief?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And Mary Jo, you know?
Yeah.
Again, and here's the public service announcement, is absentee voting is the cool thing to do this year. All the kids are doing it. If anybody watched Channel 9 this weekend, the president was in town, he had an exclusive interview, and he specifically was asked about New Hampshire absentee voting. And he said it was one of the processes he has confidence in.
Huh.
So if you're worried about absentee voting, New Hampshire's, New Hampshire's been doing it for like 70, 80 years, and it works. And those of us who have been involved in this, you'll even know, it's, the ballots are counted as they come in. They wait for a, they wait for a lull, and then they start processing them. So it's not like there's all these boxes that are forgotten about. It's, the ballots are actually announced, checked off the checklist, run through the machine, so it's not anything, New Hampshire does it right, I guess is what I'm saying. So you can have faith in absentee balloting for what it's worth coming from my mouth or my mask. And so I would encourage people to do that. And the other thing I would do is, people, please have patience with us, because this is going to be all new, and we're going to have to figure this out as we go along, so. All right, I think we're good with the primary stuff, then?
All right, then I would like to move to accept and expend unanticipated funds per RSA 31:95-B to the food pantry from James Marino in the amount of $100.
Second. So let's go with Charlie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, other business, anything?
I imagine so.
Announcements?
Just that maybe you wanted, Senator Tom Sherman will be here October 6th to bring you up to date on the 2020 legislative session.
Okay, great.
A reminder, Lisa?
Say that again?
The legislator, were you going to discuss that?
Oh, yes, thank you. So the NHMA is holding their legislative policy in person, October 2nd, I believe it is. And they're looking for the voting delegates, like they do each year, for each town. I would like to request that the board authorize me to attend as a voting delegate this year as well.
Everybody okay with that? Lisa's done it for us before. Is there a free lunch that goes with it?
Um, I don't think so. It doesn't last that long.
If there is a free lunch, you'll let us know, right? Because that could be a factor.
Yes, absolutely. I will say that the, if everyone could take a look at the legislative policies that will be presented and have any recommendations for how the board should vote, then at the next board meeting would be the time to let me know that as a board, and then we can decide, you know, if there's a difference of opinion, and we can always vote as to how we feel that I should vote, because I am there to represent the town of Newton.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Great, thank you.
Otherwise, I will do what I think is the best for the town.
Excellent. All right, so we have, what do we have, three manifests?
Yep.
Everybody, somebody have that?
I will move to sign vendor manifest dated September 1, 2020 in the amount of, holy cow.
I don't think that's a number.
I don't think that's the right number.
1 million?
I'm going to say it's 1,195,226 dollars, I'm going to say the 3 was meant to be a dot, and 99 cents.
Oh.
Of which, 1,138,819 dollars, no cents, goes to the September Sandboard Regional School District payment.
Wow, okay, a second on that?
Second.
Seconded by Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to sign Highway Construction Revolving Fund vendor manifest dated September 1, 2020 in the amount of $51,722.30.
Second.
And I'm sure we all know what that is.
Seconded by Charlie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to sign the new fire rescue station vendor manifest dated September 1, 2020 in the amount of $1,053.72.
Second. We'll give it to Larry. All in favor?
I can't hear him, that's why.
And then I move to sign payroll manifest for pay period August 16 through 29, 2020, with a pay date of September 3, 2020.
Second.
Got you, Larry.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like to say one thing before I forget it, going way back now to, I guess it was B. We voted for the boards, the individual boards, committees, and commissions to be able to come back. However, this is not a directive on our parts to tell them they have to come back.
Right.
Right?
Correct.
Because they still have the ability, under the emergency order, to meet electronically. So just so that's clear in the minutes that we're not...
If they think it's better for that board to do so, exactly, yes.
Exactly. So, so make sure that's clear in the minutes, because I could see somebody being confused in saying we have to...
Well, the Board of Selectmen said, or...
Well, they did say that, that's why.
Yeah, so...
Since we did go back to B for a moment, I did want to mention the one other thing, access to the documentation, their plans, et cetera, from that board. Even if they do hold their meetings in here...
Yeah.
That means if they need to refer to any plans or whatever...
To go out and around?
They're going to have to go out and around, go in, get them, come back in around, and then vice versa. Is there any reason why Conservation cannot have passcodes to these doors, these internal doors?
Do you have passcodes for those doors?
I don't know. Never tried.
I don't either.
I think the Selectmen have it.
It's been a mystery for as long as I've been...
I think the Selectmen have every door.
I don't think so, because I haven't tried it lately, but I was with the Rec Commission, I was trying to get back in here without going outside, and I couldn't get through those doors.
Well, I know if you're in that room, you can't get through that first door.
Right.
But your code should work on these doors that have the code pads.
I don't have a problem if they have...
But if they don't, I mean, if the board wants, we, Chief Dewitt can put them in for you.
Yeah, I mean, I don't often find myself needing to get through there, but I think you're basically saying a secretary, right? Because we give passcodes to the secretary.
Correct.
Why can't the secretary enter and come through?
Right.
Yes, exactly.
They're employees of the town. It shouldn't be an issue.
Right.
There wouldn't be a liability, or if there was, they're under covered under the char, the side door.
If there is, then they need to put things away.
Correct.
Can't get into the...
Can't get in the rest of them, they're not coded for me.
Sounds like he's going to get updated.
What's that?
Charlie doesn't have all the codes.
Yeah, I can only get in Diane's side door.
Oh, he never finished you.
Mike never did it.
COVID hit.
No, he was concerned about the noise. When he was trying to put the codes in, he was having a trouble.
Oh, that's true, too.
He was concerned about the noise.
I think he just did the outside doors, right? And Diane's...
Nope, just that one.
Oh, he didn't do the outside? All right, I'll talk.
But I don't know if we need a motion, but I think the Conservation Commission secretary should have access in order to get the, what they need. I don't...
And I do think Board of Selectmen should have access to every door in this building.
I thought you did, but...
So...
Check that one before you go.
I will do that.
All right, do we want to...
So we're good on that?
We're good?
I'm good.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so approval of minutes, I think?
All right, I will move to approve the Selectmen's non-public and public meeting minutes dated August 18, 2020.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Unanimous?
I move to approve Selectmen's public meeting minutes dated August 25, 2020.
Second. Seconded by Charlie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I think with COVID, I haven't had time to come in and review any minutes for unsealing, so I think we can skip that.
Cool. So we have one more time to just remind people, next Tuesday, September 8th, 8:00 AM, 8:00 PM at 8 Merrimack, so it's all 8:00. 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM at 8 Merrimack Road, you'll find us. And I think there's going to, Diane, are we putting something from Dismalik on the website and stuff?
He hasn't given me anything, so...
But you guys will remind him.
Well, we can move that sign tomorrow, and it's at the transfer station, or we can leave it there till the weekend. It's up to you guys.
I would leave it at the transfer station.
Right now, I think it says absentee ballot town park.
Yeah.
But we can change Tuesday voting at the safety complex, 8 Merrimack Road.
Yeah.
I think that'd be better, and then. It'd be nice if he, if he had his map up on the website so people could be prepared for the kind of you they're going to have to do. It's going to be.
A mess.
It could be a mess, so.
Yeah, but I'd like to see us also posted on social media, that map of the planned.
Well, I think that's what I'm saying, is with that stuff, I prefer to have it on our website with a link on social media to go.
Right, that.
Yeah.
That's what I mean. If it's on the website, we can post a link to social media that will point people to the document itself.
And we look forward to.
Because that's typically what I do anyways, is I like to link to the town website.
And we look forward to their comments.
Do we need to put any signage out here saying if people don't go on social media?
I think we do need a sign on the front door, and a sign on the bottom door, and a sign on this door that says, turn around, voting at 8 Merrimack Road. Yeah, but I still think we want to sign it, that door down there, that door down there, and that door up there that says, turn around, voting at 8 Merrimack Road.
You know how we have the sign that goes out front that says, voting here?
Right.
Is there some way we could put something on that so people, because they don't, they don't read the signs.
At 8 Merrimack Road.
There's so many signs on these doors now, nobody reads them.
Well, that's, that's what I, this sign out here, I think, should just say, vote at 8 Merrimack Road, September 8.
Yeah, because the vote here, isn't that going to go up to 8 Merrimack Road?
It probably will, but I'm just thinking there's got to be something here for people who don't go on social media.
But Diane, Bob promised us content for the website, so make sure you bug him about that.
I will try to bug him.
And I still want to see a sign on each door at basically eye level.
Yep.
You know, big, bold letters, turn around, vote at 8 Merrimack Road.
Yeah.
Because.
I think we should close this meeting at this point.
I don't read the sign down there, so I'm sure a lot of other people don't either.